At some point, it may happen sometimes, even though I'm the developer. Even in the... As you guys... Full, full. I go for that.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, please stand if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Darrell Rice. Welcome, Mr. Rice, our future council member from Ward Number One.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, thankful for the gift of community, for the people of Canton who make this place special, and for the opportunities you give us to serve one another. We recognize that every good and perfect gift comes from you. The good we enjoy in this wonderful city is by your provision, and we say thank you. Lord, we bring before you our mayor. We ask that you would grant him safe travels and return to Canton with fresh eyes and energized for his tasks. We bring before you our Mayor Protem as he leads tonight's meeting. We bring before you our City Council and staff, and we pray that tonight's meeting, that in tonight's meeting, you grant this council your wisdom. For you say in your word, "If anyone lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives freely." And so we accept that invitation, and we ask you, and we anticipate that wisdom, and that it will shake hands with patience, and together, our hearts will lean toward what's right and fair for all. We pray for those in our community who may be hurting this evening, those who may be struggling with life's realities, disappointments. Your word says that you are near to the brokenhearted, so be near to them. Keep each of us mindful of the needs of those around us. And in this meeting tonight, let your peace and presence guide every conversation and decision. Help us all, elected officials and citizens alike, to work together for the good of this community we call home. We ask all of this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I'd call to order this November the sixth, twenty twenty-five, City Council meeting. Entertain a motion to either approve or amend the agenda.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I do need to make a couple of comments on the agenda, if that is okay. We did receive earlier this week two requests from applicants on the agenda for deferrals, and I will do those individually for you to consider. We did receive a letter from the applicant on what is listed as Item 5A, Public Hearing for Cases ANNX 2509-002 and those subsequent cases on the request to annex and rezone forty-eight point two-one acres for the purposes of developing residential subdivision and commercial area along Ball Ground Highway. The letter from Attorney Parks Huff goes as follows. As you know, this law firm represents Targi Partners LLC in its applications for annexation, rezoning, and master plan conditional use permit and variances described above. The applicant conducted a community input informational meeting on Tuesday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at Cherokee County Airport Industrial Fire Station at seven PM. The biggest concern from the community was traffic and access on Old Vandiver Road. Additionally, the fire marshal had questions about compliance with the fire access requirements. The applicant requests the case be continued until December to allow the applicant to revise the site plan to address these issues. I will let the council know that I did reach out to the attorney, Mr. Huff, on this particular matter. As this is a public hearing item, if council were to defer the item until December for a public hearing, the public hearing would be held before the council that's currently seated, and the action on the case would take place in January with the council to be seated after the first of the year. And that could be troublesome sometimes. So I did reach out to the applicant's attorney and ask that if it were deferred, that it be deferred until January the eighth, the first meeting in January for the public hearing, so that the council that's in attendance for the public hearing is also the council that would vote on the case in February. And the attorney was fine with that. So you have a request from the applicant to defer Item 5A, which is the case on Old Ball Ground Highway. If council would like to defer, we would need a motion to do so stating that council is approving the deferral until January the eighth for the public hearing. And then we would make sure that that is removed as an agenda item when we approve the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Does anyone want to defer that item of the forty-eight point two-one acres on Ball Ground Highway?
I make a motion to defer the public hearing, first case, ANNX 2509-002 and rezoning, 2509-001. Defer that until January eighth.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor Protem, we also received a request of deferral related to what is listed on the agenda as Item 11A, Discussion and Possible Action on the Master Plan Along Dr. John T. Pettit and Longview. I will read that letter. This is not a public hearing, that's an action item tonight. So the letter is, "To whom it may concern, we're in the process of revising the master plan for Mr. Medina and his partners to ensure it accurately reflects the proposed development conditions and reduces the need for future appearances before the board. The project architect is closely involved in developing a design that best supports the overall vision and objectives of this project. Additional time is required to refine the site layout and building footprints to achieve the desired outcome. Regrettably, we will not be able to meet the submission deadline. However, our team is working diligently to finalize the necessary materials from the middle. We understand that due to the upcoming City of Canton elections, the project may be rescheduled for consideration at the January hearing. Should the board or staff require any further information documentation, please do not hesitate to contact me at your convenience." Now, since this item has already had its public hearing, if you did defer, you could defer to December and take action, or you could defer to January, as is mentioned in the letter. But the public hearing's already taken place, so this council heard the case. If you deferred it till December, this council would act on the case.
Is there any desire among council to defer this case? If not, we will continue as the agenda states.
Additionally, Mr. Mayor Protem, I need to request an executive session to discuss litigation in real estate.
Okay. That will be added to the agenda.
So the agenda to be considered will have Item 5A removed, and we'll add an executive session.
Okay. Very good. And then we are looking at a public hearing for case...
It needs to be an approval of the agenda.
Okay. Requesting an approval of the amended agenda. Thank you. Fire.
Let's make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion, second. The agenda is amended as mentioned.
There has to be a vote.
Need to get a... All in favor, say aye. I'm sorry, guys, this is fairly new to me.
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. We then have a couple of public hearings, actually three public hearings tonight. Mr. Peppers is the first one, ANNX 2509-003.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
We will open the public hearing for case number ANNX 2509-003 and RZON 2509-08. Request to annex and rezone four point eight-five acres for the purpose of developing a single-family detached subdivision along Fake Con Road. Mr. Green.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. As you stated, this request is for annexation, case number ANNX 2509-003, and a companion rezoning application, RZON 2509-008. This is a request that covers four point eight-five acres located at thirty-six thirty-two Fake Con Road. The current zoning of the property is AG in Cherokee County, and the applicant is requesting R4. Their also requested density is five point seven-seven dwelling units per acre, looking for twenty-eight, up to twenty-eight lots on this property. The comp plan for this area is suburban development, and they recommend a one to three dwelling units per acre. The adjacent subdivision, Park Village, is zoned PDMU, and it was rezoned this in two thousand and two. This development for the final plats contains a hundred and forty-six single-family detached units on thirty-two point three-five acres. This comes out to a density of four point five-one dwelling units per acre. On the plats, they are designated to have thirty-five hundred square-foot lots for courtyard homes and five thousand square-foot lots for what was designated as garden homes. The lot size on the final plats range anywhere from eight thousand four hundred and seventy-six square feet to three thousand five hundred and eight square feet. The lots in Park Village that are abutting the subject property range from five thousand square feet to six thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet. There is a open space area in between the Park Village homes and the subject property. And from what I can tell on our GIS map, the closest point for the buffer or the open area in Park Village was forty-one feet. They also have a variance request to eliminate the fifty-foot buffer that is required when property zoned R4 is abutting property zoned planned development. The property to the north is zoned AG. That is not part of the petition, but you may recall, back in two thousand and twenty-three, a petition came through before the council to annex that property for the development of a convenience store, and that annexation request was denied. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have now or after the close of the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Green. At this time, we will open the public hearing. Anyone signed up to speak with us on this topic, Mr. Peppers?
Yes, sir, we do have a couple of speakers. Would you like for me to read the rules on...
If you wouldn't mind, thank you, sir.
Thank you for attending the City Council meeting this evening. Tonight, we will have public hearings related to zoning cases. Property owners in the state of Georgia have a constitutional right to seek the rezoning of their property, including potential annexations of said property into the city of Canton. The City Council is required by law to provide an opportunity for the property owner or their designate to allow such annexations and zoning requirements. Zoning cases such as those that will be heard tonight require an accurate accounting of the proceedings and commentary. The hearings are recorded verbatim and will become part of the legal record of each case. To speak during a public hearing, the state of Georgia requires that you sign an affidavit prior to speaking. This public hearing was advertised in the Cherokee Tribune, which is the legal organ of Cherokee County. Signs were posted conspicuously on the applicant property or properties, and under our development code, the applicant provided to the U.S. Postal Service a notice of zoning request to all parties within a thousand feet of the applicant property or properties. The procedure for the public hearing is as follows. The mayor will ask staff to give a brief description of the case in question. The mayor will then open the public hearing. There is allotted ten minutes for those wishing to speak in favor of the application, including the applicant, as well as ten minutes for those wishing to speak in opposition to the application. I will serve as the timekeeper and will notify any speaker at the podium when the time has expired. Comments must cease when the time has expired. The applicant may reserve a portion of their initial ten minutes to rebut or comment on any opposition comments. Once all parties that have signed up to speak have spoken, or the total time for each side has expired, the mayor will close the public hearing. Following the closure of the public hearing, the City Council will address staff with any specific questions or discussion related to the case. Speakers will be taken in the order in which they signed up to speak. As you are called to speak by the mayor or by me tonight, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. The time will start after your address is given. As there may be several speakers, we ask that you keep your comments concise and try not to duplicate the comments. You will address your comments to the mayor and council, not the audience or the applicant. Your comments are in the form of a monologue. The City Council will not address comments during the public hearing portion of this meeting. At all times, the audience will be civil. Clapping, cheering, talking, or jeering is not appropriate. Those that cannot adhere to these guidelines may be called out of order by the mayor and escorted from the meeting. Once the public hearing is concluded and the council has finished with any discussion of the case, please feel free to quietly exit the auditorium. You may always email your comments related to the case to comments@cantingga.com, and these comments will be distributed to all elected officials.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So we will now open it up to the applicant. Does the applicant have any comments that they want to make? If not, are there any folks here that are, that would like to speak in favor?
The applicant.
Okay, if the applicant is here and you want to speak, please make your way up to the front.
If you will, if you will state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay. I'm Eddie Vargas, and I reside at four two five five Cardiff Way, Coming, Georgia.
My name is Corey Sonnaker, and I reside at thirty-eight forty Cowlsar Way, Coming, Georgia.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for having us this evening. We thought that we would, you know, share our brief overview of the project along with, you know, some feedback that we received from the community. I'm sure you all will hear, you know, some of that this evening as well. But we won't take too much of your time here. So the project, we went over the location and the general overview, I think. This is our letter of intent, which we shared with the community. This just goes over some other general details. I think what we really wanted to share was, you know, more along the lines of what our intent was, given the feedback we had from the community meeting, most importantly, this evening. You know, we got a lot of feedback about the landscape buffer variance. We had looked, you know, at that, the closest points to any individual lots along the Park Village, you know, community to the west of us, which were the closest. And we went and walked our property personally and tried to see like what the vantage point actually was and what was visible, you know, given the residents' concern. And we did feel like, we did understand the request and the comments for, you know, a privacy fence if we were to be granted some sort of variance there. We were asked if we would consider that, and that is something that, you know, we, at this point, would intend on doing. I think I wanted to keep that last two, last two slides up in the margin. There we go. We had discussion about association, and it was, it would be our intent to have an association for the property independent, independently in any case. But we also had some brief discussion with the Park Village community about potential of possibly, you know, joining the association there if, you know, the development continued to be feasible for us. There was a lot of concern about stormwater runoff, and, you know, we made a commitment to keep that in consideration and, you know, obviously comply with local and state regulations and, you know, task our engineering team to come up with a design that mitigates any potential there. There was quite a bit of concern about traffic on Fake Con Road. You know, we understood that we would need at least a deceleration lane. We were also happy to hear that the T-Sfloss was locally approved during the recent election. The intersection at Fake Con and Ball Ground Higher Highway, we saw our tier-one projects, which are sort of next in line for projects after what's already in progress. So that was good to hear, and I wasn't sure if the rest of the community was aware of that. You know, we did hear some feedback about home values and, and, you know, essentially speculation on, you know, what, how that might impact Park Village and the neighboring homes, especially if potentially, you know, there was a product that was like less, that was less than the value of some existing Park Village homes. And it's our intent that as we would move forward through design to consider a mix of, you know, possibly larger and/or higher-valued homes in the mix within the intent of what we originally, you know, were looking to provide. So I think those were the, you know, some of the things we wanted to touch on as far as, you know, feedback that we heard from the community and things that we felt were necessary to consider and feel prepared to engage in.
All right. Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other folks here that wish to speak in favor of this applicant? If not...
Okay, first up, Ronald Johnson.
Welcome, Mr. Johnson. Please state your name and address.
Thank you. It's Ronald Johnson. I live at four one three Trailfinders Way, and I'm a civil engineer, which I think is extra.
Go ahead.
Can I go ahead?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I want to talk to you primarily tonight about water runoff. I'm concerned about the situation with the water running off and flooding homes and the potential for even more severe flooding, depending on how the property is built out. But first of all, I just want to say thank you for everyone within the city that's helped me negotiating and understanding how you guys work, and also for, Mr. Roach, who came out to our property today and walked it with me and has seen it firsthand. So I think that'll be very helpful, and I want to thank you for that. But my concerns and my requests are associated with the new housing subdivision located at thirty-six thirty-two Fake Con Road. A little perspective, the Park Village subdivision is an R4 zone property, so the lots are small, and there's proposed for the new development to be adjacent to Trailfinders Way, Stony Hollow Road, and Park Village Boulevard. So these properties are small, and the houses would be sitting or positioned close to the property line because of the very small backyards. And, and in order for those houses to be positioned where they are, the original contractor did some major excavations and cut about a two-to-one slope, cutting into the existing embankment, which up at the top is where the new proposed housing subdivision is planned. And the slope is no small slope, it's twenty to thirty feet high with a two-to-one slope, which creates a unique situation, I'll explain to you. But just to give you a feel for what a two-to-one slope is like, when we walked up the slope this afternoon, it's difficult just to climb up there. You have to really be careful because of the steepness of the slope. So the adjacent undeveloped property above the slope is causing water problems, existing water problems. When we get a heavy sustained rain, we're having water coming down the slope right in our backyard and our neighbor's backyard. And just so that you can envision what we're talking about here, it's not a very wide area. Maybe it's ten to twelve feet. Maybe necking down to eight as it goes by our houses. But it's coming down that two-to-one slope so fast that it actually turns the water into white water. So it's coming down pretty fast, and it's flowing out between our houses. And so far, thank God, it hasn't flooded the houses. However, sediment's coming in, and we're filling up the grade back behind our house. And if we don't do something, eventually, our patio will be covered in sediments or mud, if you want to call it that. Also, we've had experience with our next-door neighbor to my right, looking from the road. They've also experienced the white water, but also they have about a waist-high retaining wall running along the back of the slope. And with these major floods coming down the slope, his retaining wall, part of his retaining wall has collapsed twice. Once was about a fifty-foot failure. Talked to the neighbor on the other side, a couple of doors down, and they're having problems. Put in a drainage system, underground drainage system. You may be familiar with the term French drain. So there's, and I've talked to some others that said, yes, we're having flooding on ours as well. So we've been able to, for the most part, tolerate that. It's causing some expenses, but it's not a great, big, huge problem. But my concern is tonight, in addition to that, is that if a subdivision is built up top, typically, the impervious zone is about fifty percent, which means there's going to be a lot more water to deal with than we have currently. And so that's, that's something, that's a red flag I'm wanting to raise up to say this needs to be solved. Just a minute. So in summary, the surface water runoff onto the Park Village properties is unique, and it's real. If the property were developed above, a large amount of water would run off and would be substantially increased, as I've already mentioned, due to the impervious surface areas. And the normal way you handle surface water runoff on a new property is you put in detention ponds, right? And, but where would they go? Because the entire length of the proposed new property is abutting up to a steep slope. So if you just let, foolishly let the water run off the end of the detention pond, no doubt it would cause erosion and flooding in those localized areas where that point where the discharges are located. So in summary, I would like to request that the property not be approved until the surface water runoff issue is properly addressed and approved by everyone involved. And of course, also, we neighbors that are taking the brunt of this, we'd like for the new development, if it's developed, come up with some way to also take in these houses already getting flooded and change the grades, put in drains, or whatever needs to be done, make that work. And if it does get approved, just a few quick comments here. We would like to keep the buffer on their side, on the new property side, in accordance with the R4 zoning requirements. And we'd like to limit the houses to two stories, including the garage. We don't want any three-story towers adjacent to our property. And the architectural exterior to be very similar to Park Village, so it blends together, and a fence along the property between Park Village and the new property. A wood fence with continuous planks with no large gaps between them, and for them to be stained or painted and maintained so that it doesn't become an eyesore somewhere down the road. the road. And that's it. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Peppers, how much time do we have remaining?
Three minutes.
How many more speakers do we have in opposition?
We have three minutes and twenty seconds, and we have three speakers left.
Okay.
Speaker number two, Tabitha Whitlark.
Hello, good evening, council. My name is Tabitha Whitlark, and I live at six seven five Page Place here in Canton. Well, not, I mean, my address is Canton, but I'm technically in unincorporated Cherokee County. My family and I have lived here since twenty eighteen, and we have watched our area be completely destroyed by development. The development activity that's going on around Hickory Reservoir is a huge problem because the animals are leaving and are finding themselves in our roads and in our neighborhoods. We've had bears reading our trash cans, we've had one dead roadkill bear out there, turkeys, coyotes, vultures, woodchucks, raccoons, possums, deer and rabbits, anything, and you name it, and it's been killed on Fatecon, including humans earlier this year. We tragically lost two members of our community because Fatecon is a dangerous road, it's very steep with limited access over five seventy-five. You go in, it's a two lane road, you're in one or the other, or you're off the rails into the highway. Now you're asking for another housing development, when we have housing developments that haven't been completed near the reservoir, we have developments that haven't been completed over near Teasley, we have houses in Mayridge that have not been rented out yet, we've got, we've got a lot going on, and you, the, the development is disrupting our way of life out in Keithsburg. There, with the development so close to the reservoir, we're losing a lot of our wildlife, we're losing a lot of our green space, and we're, it's too much, it's just, it's too much. We've had enough, we are done with the trees coming down, we're done with our green spaces disappearing. We need a break, please just leave our area alone for a while. If the land is currently zoned agriculture, just leave it for now. We don't have to develop every piece of land into housing, it's, it's insane. So I hope that you guys will take our little commu-, rural community, take our, our plea to please just stop for a while. We need a break, we can talk about this later, but we, we can't take it, we can't take it anymore, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitlark.
With thirty-eight seconds left and two speakers.
Okay.
Would council like to consider adding time?
You have a motion?
Motion to extend time for six minutes.
Second. Motion and second. We will extend the speaking time for, I'm sorry, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. We will extend the time for a total of six minutes, and what did you say, Mr. Peppers, thirty-eight seconds?
Thirty-eight seconds.
Okay, six minutes and thirty-eight seconds.
Next up, we have Bobby Nama. Okay, thank you.
My name is Bobby Nama, I live at one one two Park Village Drive in Canton. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak to you about this situation with the development above our properties. Basically, when you, in our backyard, and you look straight up the hill, it's inclined like so, at the top would be where they're putting the property, and the building setback is what, twenty-five feet off the back, to where if they put a three story house in the back, they'd be looking at my back window, literally, it's that tight. So we're asking that you do not allow them to have a zero buffer, please make it at least twenty-five foot and give us a privacy fence along the back, otherwise, if anything happens, it's in our backyards. Right now, Ron spoke about the water issue, it's a real thing. I've got a video, I've been instructed to send it in, and it'll get forwarded to you, but the amount of water that comes off that hill right now is tremendous, and what we want to do is we just want to protect our subdivision. And right now, all the way along the back where that steep, steep bank is, the water is starting to come down a lot more over to the north of us where they put in the new retention pond for the roundabout by the county off of Technology Bluff. We are getting more and more water coming down from there as well, so as land develops, the water's got to go somewhere, and it's all coming in our backyard. So we just ask that you take this into consideration when you're looking at this and help us to maintain the value of our homes that we have to where we can keep going. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nama.
Mr. Earl Darby?
I'm Earl Darby, and I live at three hundred Herd Road, Canton, Georgia, and my family has been residents of the Keithsburg community for many years. My wife's family has been on that property for a long time. My great granddaughter who's sitting in the audience tonight is the sixth generation to live on that property, so we have a stake there. We, my main concern's traffic. Again, we've had fatalities on that road, if you go down that road, there's fatalities all the time. Every morning going to work, there's traffic backed up to the bridge, and the more traffic, just the worse it is. So it's, until the traffic's fixed in that area, I think that it, the best thing to do is just not build something else there. Simple and sweet, we don't need more cars, we don't need more things until there's a plan to fix it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Darby.
The applicant retains eleven minutes and forty-three seconds.
Would the applicant like to speak in response to the comments tonight, or any other comments?
Yes, sir. Eddie Vargas here again. I did just want to touch on, you know, regarding the slope and the runoff of the property, that, you know, pretty much all of the two to one slope is actually not on our property, it's the association's property, which is what's probably causing most of the runoff because, of course, all the water from that slope has to go where? To the bottom. So while there is likely, you know, runoff from the property at the top of the hill, you know, as well, the actual slope itself is not a part of our property. Our property is fairly level, gently rolling, and we think that would actually assist in the design of a stormwater system that, you know, should collect most, if not, you know, nearly all the water from impervious surface on our property. And that's all I, only other comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vargas.
That's all the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. If there are no others, then we will close the public hearing and open it up to council for comments or discussion. Are questions for Mr. Green? And these questions should be directed only to Mr. Green. Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Johnson. First. Mr. Green, looking at this retention wall here, I guess my question is, what is the specific plan to address the, the sediment and surface water runoff? Because the applicant just stated that it's not on their property, and that they believe that building this property, property in, in a sense will help because they'll put things in, but I just wanted to know if they had a specific plan to address the sediment and surface water runoff, number one, and number two, if approved, and I guess just hypothetical, how many feet are they looking at? Two, for a two or three story property?
Currently, there is not a specific plan for the, a maintenance of the stormwater. If the property is approved for annexation and rezoned, on the land disturbance permit plans is when that would be addressed, and they would have to maintain the property or the water runoff on their property and release it at a rate of pre-development conditions.
Will there be, will there be an HOA with this, with this neighborhood, just to make sure somebody's going to maintain the privacy fence? That's, that's one question. Another one, on the, on the water runoff, and, and I did see the property today, and there is, at least on the, the south end of the property, there is, you can see evidence of the water, you know, from this particular property running down the, the hill, that the, the HOA. So I, I kind of agree with Mr. Johnson, I want to see a pretty specific plan on, on what they can do, because it doesn't matter what you do, water's going to go, I mean, especially when it's raining hard as much, and it is an issue. I see where the detention pond is, and, and I'm assuming that they're going to be ma-, you know, grading this, and I'm, so that, so that it would slope to that detention pond, you know, and that looks like it butts up to the neighborhood as well. So my question is, can that detention pond be moved further east, closer to the road? It may not be, it may just be the way the topo is and where they have it planned. And then, you know, the, the zoning buffer requirements, I think, need to stay, so I guess my question to the applicant would be, Mr. Green, if, if, you know, if they stay, you know, and there's a, a lot reduction, you know, is that something that they can, can live with? And that's all I have right now.
Mr. Waterman?
Just for, Mr. Green, just for clarification, I just want to make sure I understood or heard correctly, that is there an option to join the association with Park Village, or did I miss?
I have not heard that, but I believe in some previous meetings with the applicant that they had mentioned that. Now, whether they've had discussions with the Park Village HOA, I do not know.
Okay. So the last speaker, I, I'm sorry, I don't have his name written down at the moment, but he mentioned that there's, there's some, also some pre-existing conditions, so there were, there were, there was runoff, and there, you can tell that there's some, it's causing damage. There was a retention wall that had to be replaced twice, and this may echo Mr. Johnson and Mr. Roach's asks, but, one, what is, what is the applicant's plan to kind of mitigate that or eliminate that existing issue, as well as addressing any future runoff concerns? And that's, that's all for me, thank you.
Mr. Green, I had one more, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Mr. Green, I had one more question here, and I, I don't know if it's an HOA thing, but obviously with developers, once they're finished doing their work or doing their business, once they're gone, they're gone. So I guess my question is, how are the homeowners protected moving forward for any future problems that maybe they're not foreseeing today, but maybe their lots affected at a later time once this, if this property were to get constructed? Is there something in place to protect future costs for something that, I guess, really isn't their fault?
My first, my first thought would be typically no, when they come through with the land disturbance permit's application, all those possible problems should be addressed at that time, especially in terms of, of water runoff. It should be designed to eliminate or mitigate any water runoff problems.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Mr. Pepper? Yes, sir. Mr. Roach?
Another question for the applicant, did they, did they approach the county about this, this project first? I know it's, and I know it said one to three units per acre is what was in their land use plan. It's in our growth boundary, do we have a, a land use, future land use for that particular property?
Yes, sir. It's, I believe I said, what was it?
Yeah, I apologize, I missed that.
I believe it's developing suburban, and the suggested land use plan density is one to three dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
And, and that's the same as the county.
Same as the county. So, so technically, if we gave them what it's supposed to be there, you know, we could go up to three units an acre, and then does that take into consideration the infrastructure? You know, you'd have to take out that and the detention pond, so it wouldn't quite be four point eight five acres.
Yeah, once you back out the roadways, you know, the detention, that would lessen the property. At the current size of the property, not taking into account any roadways or detention pond, the comp plan would allow fourteen duplex, fourteen dwelling units per acre.
Fourteen, or fourteen, fourteen units total?
Yes, sir. Fourteen. Now, that number may be reduced due to the infrastructure.
Any other questions? Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Green, as I sit here and think about the subdivision at the bottom of the hill, wondering if the applicant would consider building ranch homes on that side of the property to help with the privacy of the residents already there? Also, I'm wondering what the square footage of the proposed homes would be? And their price point? And if those houses on the backside of the property could be ranches, they could be smaller, more affordable homes? I don't see a place for amenities. Is there a community gathering spot? Looks like there's room for something on the existing lot where the detention pond Do we know the price point yet?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
The applicant is here in the audience, I'm sure that, that he's heard your questions and concerns, and I will, you know, look for him to provide us with a, a response to all of your concerns and questions.
Mr. Green, one, one more thing. I understand the, the project obviously would be adjacent to Fatecon, Fatecon and Park Village, which is serviced by Cherokee County Water and Sewer. CCWSA does not have service in the area, and so the site would, would need to be relinquished to the city of Canton. Can you confirm that, please, sir?
I would say that is what would have to happen, that is what Ms. Watson made in her comments.
Okay. And then also noted that the site is serviced by Hasty Elementary with eighty-seven percent occupancy, Teasley at a hundred and two percent occupancy, and Cherokee High School at eighty-three percent occupancy. Can you confirm those numbers?
I can certainly get with Mitch Hamilton with the Board of Education and get those numbers confirmed.
And then the last thing is, this, this development would, would serve any person or family that wanted to move in there, it's not age restricted, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Well, I have not heard anything mentioned about age restrictions.
Okay. Very good. There are no other questions? Thank you, Mr. Green. Next is public hearing for case number RZON two five zero one dash zero zero one, request to rezone property at a hu-, at one hundred Cherokee Street from R twenty, single family residential, to CBD, Central Business District. And, and if we could pause for just a moment and give folks that are exiting the building the opportunity to do so, we will resume as soon as they do so.
Once again, let me restate, this is a public hearing for, for case RZON two-five-zero-three dash zero-zero-one. Request for rezoned property at a hundred Cherokee Street from R twenty, single-family residential, to CBD, Central Business District. Mr. Green?
I thank you again, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. As you stated, this is rezoning case RZON two-five-zero-three dash zero-zero-one, located at one hundred Cherokee Street. The current zoning of the property is R twenty. Uh, the last known use that I'm familiar with or know of the property, it was used as a surveyor's office. And I believe the property has been vacant for the last several years. The applicant is requesting the CBD zoning to operate a, a neighborhood restaurant. The size of the property is point six-nine-two acres. The comp plan that it is in for the fu- uh, future character area is historic traditional neighborhood. Combatable use is listed in the comp plan is medium-density residential, traditional neighborhood development, senior housing, parks, recreation, green space, and institutional. The applicant is also requesting two variances to encroach into the current stream buffer. Uh, it appears that the house was first constructed when there was only the requirement of a twenty-five-foot buffer. Uh, the extra fifty, seventy-five-foot stream buffers was adopted in twenty-fourteen, when we adopted the current United, uh, Unified Development Code. The other variance is used to gravel as their parking area. Currently, our code requires parking surfaces to be of a hardened nature, either, uh, concrete or asphalt. The parking out there now currently is the existing gravel. I would like to mention an email that was received today from the applicant, and that they would like to have food trucks, and I believe the way the email read, park as a permanent use on the site. This typically requires a temporary use permit, and they are allowed in commercial and industrial properties on a vacant lot. Obviously, with the existing house there, the lot is not vacant. I provided you with a copy of the email that I received, along with a copy of the survey that shows the location of the creek and the twenty-five-foot stream buffer, along with the fifty and seventy-five-foot buffer. And that's what I have for that.
Thank you, Mr. Green. We will now open the public hearing.
We had no one sign up, but the applicant, um, could come forward and speak for up to ten minutes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pepper, what was the last thing you said?
The applicant, uh, would be allowed to come up and speak.
Okay, is the applicant here, and if so, would the applicant like to speak? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Fiorella Soto, and I live at nine-two-two Raven Drive in Vobert, Georgia. Uh, right here beside me is the owner's son, the owner's actually sitting down back here. They own this house at a hundred Cherokee Street, which is currently sewn as residential. Uh, they are respectfully requesting to rezone the property. Now, the property will become a restaurant, but not your traditional family restaurant. It is more of what's, we see in the future is, a lot of people are either ordering from Ubers, um, other things online and getting it delivered to their home. A lot of people would rather pick up and take it back home to eat than dining into these restaurants. So, what the owner wants to do is, yes, the people can come, pick up the food, but there'd be almost rarely any dining in, like a traditional restaurant, more like pick up and take home i- in a way. Now, when they bought the house, as you see in the, in the photographs, um, there is gravel in the parking lot. I believe that gravel because there was a lot of times where there was, um, occupational tax certificates were taken out on this address in the previous years. And I believe for three years straight, it was a church at the, uh, at this place, at this property. I believe that's why there's gravel, uh, there present now. However, of course, the, um, owner's willing to make any changes with the property in, uh, helping, uh, make your decision. And, um, of course, will work closely with pa- uh, planning and development. Uh, if this is approved, there won't be any changes outside of the actual structure of the house. There will be inside because of the, of course, um, the kitchen, uh, and where they're gonna store the food and all that, all those things. Outside, um, if you, if you wish, he is, uh, willing to put a parking lot of either asphalt or cement instead of what the gravel is there now. The restaurant, of course, we had a community input meeting. We have, uh, another family who actually lives on Cherokee Street, uh, come. They live about approximately four or five houses down the road, and, uh, they seem very excited, uh, about this restaurant, uh, because it's from the country of Guatemala, which is in Central America, and they would like to see more of a diverse, uh, community in the city of Canton. I believe there's a lot of people from Guatemala that actually live in the city. As I was driving by, there's a lot of people, and, uh, they're, they're, they're pretty much excited if, if this does get approved. Other than that, we noticed, um, we would like to see increase, increase in pedestrian, uh, activities. We saw the new sidewalks, uh, that was built on Dr. John Petit Street, along with the, uh, street lights. And we would, we would like, our goal is to have more pedestrian actually activity, more people walk around the city, gathering, getting their food instead of vehicles. Other than that, like I said, we will, uh, work closely with pa- planning and development when it comes to the, uh, permits. I know it's, we know it's a historic center, and that's why anything, um, we'll get permits for everything. The owner never has gotten a citation, uh, on this property. Of course, if this does, uh, change into a general, uh, commercial, he is willing to, of course, get the dumpster with the city of, uh, Canton and any other utilities, uh, that they allow. And that's pretty much it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Just making sure there are no other residents here to speak in favor or against the application?
No one else signed up, sir.
Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing and open it up to council for comments or questions for Mr. Green. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Green, uh, they mentioned, uh, instead of doing a gravel parking lot, uh, a regular asphalt-type po- parking lot, how many spaces, we found out how many spaces that would accommodate?
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Green, I do have one question. Uh, there was mention of, you know, the vast majority of the business being takeout. I would be curious if they have an estimate of the amount of business percentage-wise, and I guess is fine, of those customers that might wish to dine in? And if, um, if the plans that they've submitted include all of the necessary requirements for a dine-in restaurant, that would be good information to have. Oh, sorry, Ms. McGrew, I didn't see you.
That's okay, I, thank you so much. Mr. Green, um, can you tell me if a grease trap would be required for this restaurant?
If it is a restaurant, I'm quite certain that a, that a grease trap will be required.
Okay, that's, uh, what if it's food trucks?
Uh, the food trucks, that is a, a new, a wrinkle that was just, uh, received today, but I can certainly, you know, check that out. Most, uh, food trucks, I believe, will have some type of grease trap on their own truck.
Okay. And I noticed that they want a variance for encroaching into the stream buffer. How far do they want to go in?
Well, uh, the, a survey or, you know, site plan that I, I laid in front of you earlier shows that the house barely encroaches into the existing twenty-five-foot buffer. It could be that when the house was built, the buffer was only twenty-five feet, and over the years, the, uh, stream has meandered, which may be causing that slight encroachment there now. The existing requirement from, uh, twenty-fourteen, when we adopted the Unified Development Code, requires a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer, plus an additional twenty-five feet that can be disturbed, but cannot contain any impervious surface. This was pretty much an existing house back in, uh, twenty-fourteen, when the code was adopted.
Got it. Okay, um, I'm not opposed to permeable parking. Gravel, I think, would be a mess for that much incoming and outgoing traffic during, um, rain season. But permeable parking would be much more desirable than asphalt or concrete, in my opinion.
In, in Ms. Watson's report or her comments?
Can you speak up, please?
Oh, sorry. In Ms. Watson's comments, she did recommend, if this is approved, that there'd be like a, a twenty or thirty-foot concrete apron at the entrance of the property to keep the gravel from spilling out into the roadway.
I see. Thank you very much.
Mr. Roach? I mean, it's always exciting to have a new restaurant come to town, for sure. The issue that I have with this particular piece of property is changing it to CBD when it's not contiguous with any other CBD property. It's, it's mainly residential, well, it's all residential, and, and with the long view development, not long view, but with the other, with the sanctuary development and everything coming in and out on Pettit Street, it's, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a mess traffic-wise until we figure out where we're gonna, when we're gonna be able to put roundabouts and all that kinda stuff. That's my main issue with this, is if we, if we put this into the CBD, where does that, where does it stop then? Can, can other houses up Cherokee Street, which has been around for a long time, can, can they, can they do that as well? I just don't, that's my personal opinion, is the traffic on and out, in and out on, on Pettit Street, which, if you're there anytime in the morning or leaving work, it's just backed up. And then, the simple fact that that's all residential around it. I mean, I think it's a great idea, I would, I, but I just don't know if that location is fit for what they're trying to do. Just my comments. Mr. Waterman?
This is probably not a question, but more, more of a comment, but if the request is to go from a residential to CBD, we wanna look at, uh, potential examples where that's existing. So, I think of the holler, for example, where there seems to be issues there as well, as far as a residence and a, uh, a, a business bordering each other. So, what's the impact to the resident versus potential business, that relationship? And this is not so much a question, Mr. Green, this is just more of, for the room, for the council, for the record, to, things to think about as we are, um, evaluating, evaluating, um, you know, this, this request.
Thank you, Mr. Waterman.
And Mr. Green, uh, Councilman Waterman did bring up, uh, the holler, and it made me think of, uh, I, I thought there was some discussion about a noise ordinance. Would that be anything, uh, that would be in the play if this were to get approved in that particular area?
I know that there is a noise ordinance committee, and that is under consideration. I'm not sure if it has been approved yet. I do not recall hearing it being approved, but I know that it is in discussion.
Okay.
Thank you. And, Mr. Green, I ha- I have a couple, actually, three things I wanted to bring up. I think I heard the applicant say if the gravel parking was not acceptable, they would be willing to put in concrete or paving on the property, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And then, I'd also like to confirm, I believe the closest business is Sosby Funeral Home. I think that's point zero-three miles away, is that fair?
Uh, Sosby's would be one. There is another business, uh, I think it's south of Cherokee Street, that's an automotive repair. And further up the street is, uh, twenty-three-and-a-half-hour lock key.
At the top of John T. Pettit and, um, East Main Street, I guess?
Yes, sir. I can get you the approximate distances for all three of those operations.
That would be helpful. And then, the last thing, as it relates to the food truck, is the food truck going to be stationary? Uh, I'm not suggesting that it should be fixed to the property, but will they have the ability to take that food truck, for instance, to, for instance, to events in the city?
From the email that we received this afternoon, it appears that they want the food truck to be there permanently. However, the applicant addressed that question, if it would be able to be, um, a mobile and moved to different events or construction sites, what have you.
Okay. Yeah, that, that would be good information to have as well, so thank you. If there's nothing else, we'll, we'll move on. Item D, the public hearing for the discussion, possible action on the annual update to capital improvements element for impact fees. Mr. Turner?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council. Uh, tonight we have a public hearing for the annual update to the capital improvement element. This is essentially our yearly reporting that we have to do with the state, that's Department of Community Affairs and the Atlanta Regional Council Commission, sorry, for how we use our impact fees, how we collect our impact fees, and how we plan to use it. So, I won't go through all of the numbers, just quick highlights. That first chart is the financial report. That shows our beginning balance, the amount that we collected, the amount that we spent, and then the ending, uh, balance. And then, the next chart, uh, with the blue lines across the top there, that, that's actually the CIE. So, that's, that's our project list, uh, brief project description, our name, um, estimated cost, how much impact fees we plan to use for it, and then, uh, estimated timeline. So, this is what we have to update, um, and change every year, and then submit that to continue using and collecting impact fees. We have been in discussions, uh, with the state about the flexibility and potentially moving deadlines. It's a, it's a very tight turnaround with their review period, our public hearing process. Uh, this is the transmittal tonight. We send it them, they review, they send it back with comments, we make some changes. They're usually kinda clerical, it's not anything, this qualifier project or an issue like that. And then, we have to get that back before you for adoption. That adoption is then transmitted to them, and then they still have time after that to review. So, it doesn't actually matter when they receive it, it's when they actually, so, um, that has caused us some issues with meeting the deadline in the past, so, um, like I said, that's something we're working on, but I am asking for action tonight, if possible. That would be approval to transmit. Any questions at this time for me?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Pepper, since this is a public hearing, I guess we need to go through the process of finding if there are, finding out if there are folks in the audience that are in favor of this project, of this initiative, I should say?
We had no one sign up for public, uh, for the public hearing.
You, you do need to open the public hearing, though.
We're officially opening the public hearing just now. And there, there are no people, no folks that are signed up, um, for or against. In that case, we will close the public hearing and open it up to council for comments. Anyone? Uh, Mr. Turner, I understand that, uh, this does need to get action tonight, so with that, if there are no comments, uh, does someone have a motion that they wanna make relative to this?
Sure. What was the word you used for this, to transfer?
Tran- transmittal. Yes, ma'am.
What?
Transmittal, to transmit.
Uh, motion to approve, approve transmittal of the annual update to the capital improvements element for impact fees.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration of appro- to approve minutes from the October sixteen, twenty-twenty-five meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes from October sixteen, twenty-twenty-five.
Second. We have, I said, do we need to get a vote on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We have no informational items, other announcements, or ten-minute public input this evening, or anything on the consent agenda, so we'll move into old business, discussing, discussion and possible action on case MP two-five-zero-eight dash zero-zero-one and CUP two-five-zero-eight dash zero-zero-two, request for master plan and conditional use permit for Longview Street and Dr. John T. Pettit Street.
Once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of council. As Mr. Pepper stated earlier, the public hearing for this application has already been heard, and tonight is a possible action meeting. The request for MP twenty-five-zero-eight dash oh-oh-one and CUP twenty-five-zero-eight dash oh-oh-two is a new master plan from the master plan that is currently in place. The current approved plan calls for ninety-six single-family detached homes and twenty-eight duplex units for a total of a hundred and twenty-four living units. This number requires only one means of ingress egress to the development. The original application that was submitted for this current request was for fifteen single-family detached homes, eighty townhomes, forty-eight duplexes, and a hundred, or a total of a hundred and forty-three living units, which would require two means of ingress egress. And these were shown off of Long Street and Dr. John T. Pettit Streets. The revised plans, which now shows fifteen single-family detached homes, well, let me go back. The applicant submitted a revised site plan subsequent to the public hearing, and at which time he has reduced the number of living units back to a hundred and twenty-four. And now they are seeking fifteen single-family homes, thirty-nine townhomes, and seventy duplex units, for a total of a hundred and twenty-four. They are also stated, or have also stated, that this will be private streets, which therefore will mean it will be a gated community. They have agreed to pay eight hundred dollars per unit to the Canton Housing Fund. They've agreed with the Board of Education to contribute seven hundred dollars per unit to the Board of Education as a mitigation fee. The comp plan shows this area as being in the historic, traditional neighborhood with a medium residential density of four to six dwelling units per acre. The proposed density at a hundred and twenty-four units equals three-point-seven-six dwelling units per acre. There is also a variance request that the area for single-family detached homes be reduced from the code required twenty-five percent to fifteen percent, and this is in land area, not in number of dwelling units.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Just a couple of notes for folks that have been around and were at the meeting or had awareness of the project. This was approved back in twenty-twenty-one for, as Mr. Green said, ninety-six single-family units and I believe it was twenty-eight duplexes. There were some, there were some challenges referred to, or challenges as it relates to, excuse me, some of the topographical issues, and I'll be curious if, if those have been mitigated and kind of where that whole issue stands, and I'm just curious as to where that stands, but we will, we will open it up for discussion and see if, see if folks have any, anything you wanna ask Mr. Green, comments?
And I would also like to comment that the staff has recommended approval of this with eight conditions for consideration to be approved.
And what are those conditions, Mr. Green?
Right. Number one, the development shall be limited to one hundred and twenty-four residential units. Of this number, there should be a minimum of fifteen single-family detached homes, thirty-nine townhomes, and seventy duplex units. The duplex buildings shall be constructed to typical duplex arrangement. The letters of intent dated October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five from Pepe Medina, and October twenty-one, twenty-twenty-five from Charles N. Herbert III, and master plan dated August first, twenty-twenty-five, revised October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, shall serve as the design guidelines in terms of lot size, setbacks, density, et cetera. The native plant rescue society shall be allowed access to the property prior to any land disturbance with the purpose of locating and removing any endangered plant species. The owner developer shall donate eight hundred dollars per residential unit to the City of Canton Affordable Housing Fund. This money shall be paid prior to the issuance of the land disturbance permit. The owner developer shall donate seven hundred dollars per residential unit to the Cherokee County Board of Education to serve as a mitigation fee for the impact of the school system. The amount has been agreed upon between the owner developer and the Board of Education. The development shall be accessed from Dr. John T. Pettit Street. An emergency access only may be constructed either on Longview Street or Cherokee Street. This emergency access point shall be constructed to be able to handle fire truck apparatus. Open space shall be a minimum of thirty-three percent of the total area. The rental cap shall be ten percent of the total residential units. This language should be made part of the homeowners association. If master plan twenty-five-zero-eight dash oh-oh-one is approved, the previously approved master plan, MP twenty-one-ten dash oh-oh-two, shall become null and void.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Any questions or comments from Mr. Green? If not, do we hear a motion?
I do have a question.
Okay.
And, Mr. Green, forgive me, I may have missed this, but I do recall at the last meeting, there were a few questions that were asked, and I do, I remember asking, because the applicant made the comment that their situation had changed, and I asked what specifically has changed for them.
That I do not have an answer for. I don't believe that the applicant has addressed that, other than in his, in his letter of intent, they did note that there were some rock issues that may prevent them from having the hundred-and-forty-three layout that they had originally proposed, and they were agreeable to going down to a hundred-and-twenty-four total units as previously approved.
Okay. Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Green, the previous approval for this property was environmentally friendly, green infrastructure, and various things that would improve the environment and make the development less of an impediment to the environment. So are those conditions still in play here?
No, ma'am. This would be a, a whole new application. The, the previous agreement that Mr. Beecham was, was hoping to develop, as you stated, he was to get with their city engineer to try to develop those, I'll say, new wave type of roadways, drainage soils, and if that, if that could not be accomplished, then they would develop the project under our current rules and regulations.
Thank you.
There's no further questions. I would just like to make a motion, if that's okay?
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to deny cases MP two-five-zero-eight dash zero-zero-one and CUP two-five-zero-eight dash zero-zero-two.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. The motion carries. This project, the application, has been denied. Okay. Discussion and possible action on twenty-twenty-six council, council meeting calendar. Ms. Fortner?
Um, our council meeting, the proposed meeting calendar of twenty-twenty-six. The only change was in January, where it's proposed to be on the second and fourth Thursday of that month due to New Year's Day being the first Thursday. All other meetings will be on the first and third, Thursday as usual.
Okay. Are you getting any, any questions from Ms. Fortner? Sorry?
I don't think I had my mic on.
You wanna restate that, since you didn't have your mic on?
Sure. The proposed twenty-twenty-six calendar only has a change in January, where the meetings are proposed to be on the second and fourth Thursdays of the month due to the first Thursday being Janu-, Jul-, January, January first, New Year's Day. All other months would be on the first and third Thursdays as usual.
Mrs. Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amended twenty-twenty-six council meeting calendar for Thursday, January eighth, and Thursday, January twenty-second, the second and the fourth Thursdays of January twenty-twenty-six.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Motion carries. Moving on. Under new business, discussing, excuse me, the discussion of the proposal for wastewater system master plan from Black and Beach in the amount of five-hundred-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-nine dollars. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So staff has requested a proposal for the wastewater master plan update from Black and Beach. They completed the original master plan in twenty-eighteen, and according, in, with the Metro North Georgia Water Planning District, we are required to update this plan every five years, which we are a little bit behind. This plan will take us through twenty-seventy. The current plan takes us through twenty-forty-five. Currently, the seven MGD permit at the wastewater treatment, treatment plant serves the city along with thirty-three pump stations, seventeen miles of force mains, and a hundred and ten miles of gravities. The update will include wastewater flow projections, wastewater collections, and hydraulic conveyance system evaluation, wastewater treatment capacity, capacity planning, capital improvements plan, master plan report, and is expected to take twelve months for completion. I will say, I do plan to talk to Black and Beach about a continuous update plan where we're not hit, hit with such a huge amount every five years to update this plan. It also helps staff with data collection. It is cumbersome when we have to go back eight years and tell them everything that we, has been added and everything that is to be planned. So that is part of what I will hopefully be bringing in the future for budget considerations, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. So tonight is discussion only. We will, I guess, vote on this at the next meeting, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Watson? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item's item B, discussion of the agreement for consulting services between City of Canton and Tetra Tech, Inc. Ms. Watson?
Yes, sir, thank you. So city staff has been meeting off and on with Tetra Tech for the last six months or so, and discussing possible projects and possible collaboration between the city and Tetra Tech. Currently, we have Black and Beach and Brown and Caldwell that are our main water and sewer providers for consulting, and so with the amount of work that Black and Beach is doing for the city right now, and the focus we want them to have on the water and sewer master plans that we currently have going on, I did wanna bring Tetra Tech in. They have, they also have transportation services as well as other types of environmental services with power and electricity, among a few other things. They will be providing on a task order basis, professional services, construction phase, agent of owner inspections, design modifications during construction, record drawings, document deliverables, and cost estimates. I will say that all the projects that we do with Tetra Tech will be on a demand services basis, so all of them will be task orders that will be, that will come to city council for approval prior to any work that we do with that firm. I'd be happy, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. So I may have missed this. Do we currently do any or much business with them?
We have not. There are employees that have worked with previous consulting firms that we have worked with, that these, some of the employees do, not all of them, but come with very high recommendations from other utilities. Dave has worked with, Gillian Jack is the main person that I've been dealing with, and he has worked with her in the past, and she comes with huge recommendations. They, I mean, they're, they have really high, I meet with a lot of firms, everybody wants to talk to somebody who's looking at building a water, water plant in the future, and they, they really exhibit the types of projects and, and communication that I look for in consulting.
Excellent. I know you always do a great job in vetting potential partners. Have you had an opportunity to speak with other municipalities that have done business with these folks?
So they're working with, I can't, I can't think of the name of the community that they're building a, a pretty large wastewater plant similar to ours in size and has had similar issues with the engineering firm. They're actually acting as the owner's agent instead of the engineer on that project. And so I have spoken with them about, but I can't, I will have the, the name of that firm for you at the next. I can't reme-, not firm, but the name of the municipality.
That would be great. Again, I know you, you always do a great job of vetting potential partners, so that would be great to have at the next meeting. Any questions?
I just do have one comment. Thank you for that. So, I mean, to, from a risk standpoint, it's always good to open up another avenue instead of having our eggs all in one basket. So to basically diversify our supplier group, and someone that can offer the same services as Black and Beach, and also deliver some other, some additional services is good. So, yeah, thank you for that. It's always, it's always a cringey moment when, let's give them, let's keep, you know, pouring money down another, one, one partner that if they, they could go belly up, so it's, it's reducing any risk that we, that we may be exposed to, so thanks.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Ms. Watson, I may have missed this, and if I did, I apologize, but is this for both improvements, utility moving at both areas where we're going to do work, at Reinhardt College Parkway and down at Hospital Road, or is it just one place?
So this agreement would just be for demand services, so they could potentially do work for us on, on multiple projects.
Thank you, I did miss a lot. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Watson?
Thank you.
One more time, Ms. Watson. Discussion and possible action, this is item C, on the addendum to task order number five, Project Highway one forty, P one-zero-zero-one-seven-seven-eight-nine, utility relocation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. In March twenty-twenty-four, the city contracted with Keck and Wood to assist in the design of the utility relocation services for water and sewer for the SR one forty project, that is city-led but GDOT-funded. The fifteen thousand dollar addendum is for additional services that have been requested by the city and the state beyond the original scope. Work will include a GDOT retention request letter, which will involve evaluating the existing manhole structures within the vehicle wheel path, drafting letters to utilities, revisions to the proposed sewer plans based on GDOT, and engineer comments, drafting supplemental specs as well as a contingency of twenty-five hundred dollars. So I did wanna give a little bit more context to this. When these types of projects, the GDOT projects happen, we have to go through a series of plans that have to be submitted to, to go through with all the other utilities. So- So there will be a first phase where the engineer will ask for all utilities to submit their original plans, showing where the utility lines are now. They will put them on the plans that GDOT or whatever company is doing it, on those plans to show where those utilities are. Well, that utility doesn't know what another utility is wanting, where they're wanting to move their lines to. So when that happens, and then we go to phase two, there may be a bunch of changes that have to happen, and you never know. We make estimates based on how much work we imagine that the engineer will have to make. Unfortunately, with this particular project, we're having some issues with having approval of where we're wanting to move our sewer line. We're having to do additional method of construction, which is not typical. GDOT wants to see method of construction for this particular project, which means that they have to go in and show shoring and to make sure that when we put this sewer line in the ground fifteen feet below the road, that the road's not going to slough off. So it's, it's just really, a little bit more detail, like I said, there will be a retention request letter that will be required and some additional items, and then we have that twenty-five hundred dollar contingency in case this next round, they come back and say, you got to change it again. Unfortunately, GDOT's a whole lot stricter about what's in their right of way and where it's at in their right of way than, than most municipalities are, so I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for that level of detail, really appreciate it. Any other questions, comments?
Oh, I will say, I am asking for action tonight just because GDOT wanted the plans like three weeks ago, so.
Okay. Mr. Waterman?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the addendum to task order number five for project highway one forty, PI zero zero one seven eight nine, utility relocation in the amount, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 You oppose, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Next, we have discussion of disposal of public works vehicles. Mr. Ingram?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Council. Thank you, good evening. Just to let you know that we're not asking for action tonight, we'll be putting this on your November twentieth agenda for your consideration to approve. But please recall that this year and this year's budget, we put in for funding for a new bucket truck and a new sweeper. We have purchased those, and we are in possession of those. We're actually using both, except the bucket truck, which is receiving some light steech house and a few little odd ends. But we're, we have in front of you tonight some consideration to review disposition of our existing trucks. We're doing it a little bit sooner this year because we would like to get those on GOV deals. We think these, these two vehicles would be a better fit to be placed on GOV deals and reach out, you know, to an extended market for potential use at another municipality or such. So if you have any questions, it's a two thousand F five fifty and a two thousand and fourteen Freightliner with the sweeper truck, so if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer that, answer those for you or get a response for you before the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Any other, any questions or comments?
Just had one, just for recap, the purchase amount on the new trucks were around three hundred thousand dollars, is that correct?
For the sweeper and for the bucket, I think it was more along about a hundred thousand.
Okay. And what are we looking to get out of the existing vehicles?
I would like to get about four or five hundred thousand of both of them. I just, I don't know, it's actually a good question, Councilmember Johnson, because that was one of the reasons why we're wanting to put these on GOV deals, hopefully get that outreach a little bit more, get a little bit larger of a market for these, and hopefully we can get a little bit more for the auction price on these two items.
Awesome, thank you. Other comments? Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Thank you.
Mr. Peppers?
We've been presented with the intergovernmental agreement with Cherokee County to conduct our elections for us. We've been, for years now. The current agreement was done in two-year increments. The proposed agreement with Cherokee County is for a ten-year auto renewal, so every year it would auto renew for an additional year, with the first auto renew occurring January first of two thousand and twenty-seven. The agreement is very similar to our existing agreement, except for that change, and also a couple of changes to the fee schedule, which has been updated. The major changes to the fee schedule included increase in labor costs from fifteen dollars an hour to twenty-five dollars an hour. There was an increase in toner cost to fifty dollars per toner cartridge. There was a hundred dollar increase to training for, for the election and poll worker staff, and there was a mileage increase from forty-five cents a mile to seventy cents a mile. It is the same fee schedule that's presented to the other municipalities in Cherokee County, and it's the same intergovernmental agreement that they will receive as part of this extension of service. We are not asking for action tonight, but we would like to get it taken care of before January, when the current agreement expires. Happy to answer any questions.
So we, at the next meeting, we could, we could vote on this?
That's correct.
Peppers, okay. Any questions, comments? Ms. McGrew?
Mr. Peppers, I'm just curious, why is there a mileage charge?
It's related to the transport of ballots, transport of equipment. It could be related to mileage of board members of the elections board, since they would oversee the election. In most cases recently, as we've had city elections that have coincided with county or state elections, we have not had any charges as it relates to election cost. But if the election were ours as a standalone, and there were not any state or county races, they would be reimbursing themselves for all costs related to the election.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Peppers. While you're up there, Mr. Peppers?
Yes, I do have a few items on to the city manager's report tonight. One item I want to make you aware of that will be coming to you at the next meeting relates to the Indigo Apartments that are down at Prominence Point. There is a sale of that complex to a new apartment management firm. When that project was first approved, one of the zoning conditions was for the development to provide ten percent of their units at eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income, which equates to seventeen units. The new owner wants to formalize that into an agreement as part of their purchase documents. Staff and our city attorney have been working with the buyer to review that particular document and how it would lay out, and how it formalizes that zoning condition over the next fifty years. We do plan to bring that to you at the November twentieth meeting for consideration and possible action. I actually had a phone call earlier today with the attorney for the seller and the attorney for the buyer reviewing some of the language that was in there. As soon as we get that document, we'll distribute it to the council, so you'll have a little bit more advance notice, but we do anticipate putting that on your November twentieth agenda. Additionally, this week, we had a kickoff meeting on the South Canton Park project now to get that project up and going. We just received our approvals today from Georgia Soil and Water on, on the project, so that is moving forward, of course. If you've noticed, our staff's been working on holiday decorations. It's never too early to start decorating for Christmas and the other holidays, so that's been going on. We do get questions occasionally from citizens about why we start at the beginning of November, and simply put, there's a lot of stuff to put out, and so when we have good weather days, we try to get that done, along with everything else that our public works team is responsible for. On November the nineteenth, we will be having our downtown Christmas tree lighting event, and new this year is a drone show, so you will be able to see, I believe we have two hundred drones that are part of that show that will be lighting up downtown Canton. On Tuesday, the voters in Cherokee County voted to approve the T-S block, along with other municipal elections. Staff will be working over the next several weeks to start the process of planning projects that are jointly funded with Cherokee County, so that we can prioritize those projects. The collections will start in the month of April, and so generally speaking, about two months after the collections start is when we'll start seeing that revenue kick into the city. Because of that, you will see an amendment to the city's overall budget for the next year, because we'll have to add that fund source in in any way, in the current fiscal year as part of our budget. We did have an RFP that went out this week for hotel developers for our hotel site downtown and the feasibility study that was completed on that by Horwath and HTL. And then lastly, I wanted to recognize our team member of the month, which is Stephanie Baum. Stephanie is the administrative assistant in the engineering office, and she is a delight to work with, great sense of humor. She also has the greenest thumb of any employee here at City Hall. She's who everybody goes to if they have a question about a plant in their office that is sickly, but she does a great job helping out our engineering department, working with developers, helping them get what they need as it relates to land disturbance permits and approvals and, and just finding out more information, so we appreciate her and her hard work. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Make sure there's no council introduced items this evening. I'm going to take the opportunity to congratulate Mr. Roach and Mr. Waterman in winning their contested races, so congratulations to you two. We're looking forward to working with you for as long as the good Lord will have us. And also, big congratulations to Mr. Rice, who was not contested, but was ready to roll up his sleeves and, and fight for his race, so he'll be, he'll be joining us in Ward One in big shoes to fill with Ms. McGrew, who's done a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Over the many years that she's served the City of Canton. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and move to executive session to discuss litigation and real estate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. We are adjourned.